Tonight it is six thirty.
Yeah.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Cody Pivost.
Present.
Dave Schmidt.
Present.
Darren Olson.
Present.
Mark Lockner. And I am here, Pat Rashaski.
Those that are able, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We are going to head into our virtue card reading. Pat will give us a read when we're ready.
Tonight's virtue is moderation. Moderation is creating a healthy balance in your life between work and play, rest and exercise. You don't overdo or get swept away by things you like. You use your self-discipline to take charge of your life and your time. You're practicing moderation when you get enough of what you need, no more, no less. You use self-discipline to stop yourself from overdoing, take care of your health, balance work and play in your life. Know your own limits and set and set boundaries for yourself. Are content with enough affirmation. I am moderate. I am thankful and content to get what I need. I use my time and energy wisely. My life is well balanced.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education guidelines with an open mind will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views. Even when views are not in line with all members being respectful of time. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders and monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and solve their successes in academics, arts, and athletics. And then with that, tonight, we're gonna roll into public comments. I am probably gonna save us some time and not read it. I don't know if we have any tonight. Alright, with that silence, we'll move forward into showcasing schools and student learning. We have Joe in here tonight from the Boys and Girls Club. He is a unit director for Nacusa. Joe?
So I'll just read real quickly our overarching results. The board's results say, Nacusa School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We will focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community. So we have Joe here tonight for the Boys and Girls Club. And that's our before and after school programming over at the middle school. So, Joe, you wanna introduce? Do you know the whole board, Joe?
Uh, I think I met everybody here before, yes.
Alright. So I'll, um, I'll run your PowerPoint. Hopefully it'll work.
So, yeah, I hope so. Alright, so I'm just trying to do a little overview to let you guys know like what, you know, Boys and Girls Club has accomplished over the, I've been here now, this will be my seventh year with, uh, Nacusa. And right now, we are at a hundred and fifty-one registered members out of the three hundred and I think eighty-some odd kids that are in the middle school. So, that is huge. That's the biggest number we've ever had. Um, in my, going on seven years of being here. Um, we also are reaching numbers uh, that in the morning are in the fifties some days and then in the afternoon, we've also reached in the sixties. So our, our, our average daily attendance is forty-five and fifty-one. Um, programming wise, uh, we are a CLC, so we're a community learning center, which Terry was just touching base on the grant a little bit. Um, I'm just talking based on what we did first quarter. Uh, we focused on STEM writing and arts and crafts. And for the STEM program, uh, the kids love the, the dash and the Osmos. Anything that they can have, that's like a hands-on building technology-based thing, they're all in. Um, and, and the best part is, you know, they teach me as we go, cause I'm not the most tech savvy person, so. And, and anytime you do challenging, challenges with kids, they, they have fun. I, I hope they do too, cause there are two club kids back there.
They're gonna add their input.
Yeah. Writing, uh, the best part, we, we do this every year. We just finished writing our book. We do a book with the teens and we do a book with the youth. Um, and they pick a topic of the book that they want to write about and, uh, they both finish creating their books. Their parents get a chance to also purchase the books. So this year, we also had, uh, record numbers of parents that purchased the books that we created also. So, that was pretty awesome. Um, uh, arts and crafts, I, I think that's the one thing that are, all our club members excel in. Um, they are all very creative. Uh, this year, we did some rock painting thus far. Uh, anything that we can like do with clay, they excel. I'm, I'm just blown away on how creative they are. Uh, if you guys ever get a chance, uh, stop on by, we showcase their work. We have a nice display case that, uh, the kids, we try to display the things that they do. And then, uh, we always work on team building with anything that we do, all three of these things. Uh, we work on getting them to work together, cause as we all know, when you start getting a job, you gotta work with people of all different natures, so. Alright. Uh, a nice thing that we started last year, uh, we get to teach the sixth grade class, me and Laura. I don't know if, how many of you guys know Laura Bonner Ridgway? Uh, she's a great asset to our team and she, we get to work together every day. Um, and we teach a class that, you know, the first, we have the kids, uh, in sixth grade will have a group, uh, first and third quarter, and then we'll have a group second and fourth quarter. And then the, the first two quarters will do life skills with them. Um, so it, it's things that, um, by, you, we'll teach them like the basics of, you know, buying and selecting a house, you know, also a car, seeing, you know, getting them to appreciate what their parents really put in, because I think a lot of them are shocked by interest rates and how much your house, well, I paid two hundred thousand for this house, but in reality, after you pay the interest and all the, you know, whether, you know, it's a fifteen-year, you know, or a thirty-year, twenty, or whatever loan you may choose for your house, they're, they're kind of blown away by it. And we also do a thing of, uh, furnishing the house afterwards. So the kids are like, it costs that much? I'm like, yeah, it costs that much, so that's why your parents are usually on you to not jump on the furniture or, you know, things like that. Uh, we do a little introducing, we introduce the stock market to them, not too crazy, just understanding, you know, the, the little basics of, you know, uh, if you were to purchase stock and then we work on, you know, getting them to understand when they start getting jobs, how to budget their money, you know, whether it be how much percentages you wanna put in the savings, you know, go out with your friends spending money, uh, things like that. Uh, and then the second, uh, unit we do with them is a career launch where we work with mid-state, uh, technical college and uh, we get the kids exploring careers. Uh, we want them to start thinking about, you know, it's never too young to start thinking about your future. Um, uh, we do things like, uh, we, we help them build resumes. Uh, I know they're a little generic at their age, but it's getting them to understand the importance of, uh, building relations with, you, you know, staff like us, like, like their teachers, principals, because those are the people, teachers, that you're gonna be asking to be, you know, references for you. You can't ask mom or dad, which blows all of them away. Like, well, why can't mom and dad be my reference? Well, mom and dad are always gonna say nice things about you. Uh, and then the one thing that, uh, uh, we really focus on during the career launch unit is the interviewing skills. Um, it's one thing that while I was growing up, I was a pretty timid, shy person who struggled to speak to anybody, believe it or not. Um, and, uh, getting them to, you know, get used to answering, you know, s- they're, they're not like really technical questions, but they're, they're questions that may be asked of you when you are applying for a job, so. Uh, the one thing that I think, uh, has really helped bridge our gap is the, the relationships that we have built throughout the school day. Uh, with, you know, not only the kids, but with our teachers. Uh, we get the opportunity, like I said in the prior slide, to, uh, we get to teach that, uh, sixth grade class, eighth hour, which, you know, that, we get an opportunity to work with a whole class and it keeps going down, so, you know, and then it brings in, um, it brings in other club kids also, which, you know, which helps. Uh, I help run, you know, indoor recess, uh, for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I also help with fourth and fifth if we have a rain day or, you know, something. And, uh, I've been asked this year, which I have, I love doing, you know, I like going on field trips, cause I, it's a chance for me to, you know, meet some of the kids that are not club kids and see what makes them tick. Um, uh, Laura and I are also, um, uh, we're helpers in the classroom. So if anybody needs help, you know, or gets called, you know, and they're short, I have no problem going to help in the classroom. Uh, we always will be willing to help with behaviors. Um, and then, uh, a new thing that was started this year, uh, which Laura does is, uh, the student tardies. So if, uh, they've, I, I don't know the exact rules to it, but if they miss or if they're late a couple of times throughout the day, they have to serve like a certain amount of minutes. Um, but, uh, the one thing over the years that I've really enjoyed is the teacher and the Boys and Girls Club staff relationship. I, I can honestly say, um, I, I, some people say I don't look that old, but I am older than most people think. I've really enjoyed the relationships that I've been able to build with everybody at Alexander Middle School the last seven years, so. Um, uh, our family nights, uh, I'm gonna touch base. We had our first family night this year. We had the Lights On After School Event, which is, uh, it's an event that, uh, is showcasing the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we had, this was our record number from the seven years that I've been here. Uh, we had twenty-seven families attend and almost seventy total people within those families, which, you know, which is huge for us, because when I first started, we couldn't get, I mean, you'd be lucky to get one or two families to come to a family night. It was rough. So now, you know, as of last year and this year, it's been nice to get some, you know, buy-in from our families and, you know, i- it's been great, so, uh, uh, next slide is talking about our future events, so what's coming up? Uh, we have our holiday party at the Wisconsin Rapids Unit. Um, we also have a holiday party that we have at Nacusa, which is another family night, which the kids really enjoy. They get to, uh, frost cookies with their parents. They get to make, uh, they always do a gift for their parents, which I won't say, because they might make one for dad or mom. Um, so, uh, uh, the art show is a new thing that we are gonna be showcasing, um, this year. Uh, it's gonna be in April, which is gonna showcase all the things that we've been doing throughout the school year with our kids, so they can show their parents. Um, the Club One-O-Five Event is an event that we do every year, which showcases the kids that really buy into the club. If you attend a hundred and five days to the Boys and Girls Club, uh, you get the opportunity to go to the Club One-O-Five Event, uh, which has been at a numerous amount of places. We let the kids always vote. This is their choice. The kids that, uh, get, get to, you know, that are in that hundred and five day vote, they get to vote on where they wanna go. So we'll give them some options, whether it be, uh, they wanna go bowling, uh, they wanna go to the movie theater, they wanna go to Skate City. We let them, you know, give us some choices. We narrowed down to like three. And then all the clubs, you know, Port, Port Edwards, Nacusa, and Rapids, they all vote on it, so it's something that they get a, get a buy-in. And my favorite event is the Teen and Youth of the Year Event. Uh, that, this year, if any of you guys get a chance and you are free Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, I mean, I, I, I really get to reflect and see all the great kids that we have at the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I, 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 I'm very appreciative. Terry was able to go to the last couple that we've had and I, I love the support and, um, I know that I struggle through it. Not, not it's a bad thing. It's a side, get very emotional through it, cause I care about what we do. I'll move on, so I'm not crying for you guys. Uh, but, uh, what's coming up this week with the kids? Uh, the Veterans Day Ceremony is on Friday. Uh, our kids really wanted to do something this year for the Veterans Day Ceremony. Uh, they have made homemade cards, uh, the last couple of weeks, and they have made some posters for, to surprise, uh, the people that are going to be there. And i- it's great to see how appreciative a lot, cause a lot of these kids have family members that are, you know, military members and have serviced our country. And I'm looking forward to Friday to, you know, let our great kids that are part of club, you know, celebrate and be a part of the event, so. Uh, community service that we do throughout the year. I'm not gonna go into like everything, but the next coming thing that we have, we've been, been doing this since I've been there. The kids, they, they go gung-ho on making ornaments for everybody that is, uh, uh, staff here at Nacusa, so, um, uh, starting after, I think, uh, probably after the event on Friday, we will be starting our, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty array of ornaments for all the staff here. And, uh, our kids really enjoy, I put this on here, the cleanup. They love going outside and picking up trash around the school, which is good, you know, it shows their character. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna showcase, we've had two months of school right now. Uh, these are four, hey, one of them, there you go. Uh, one of them's dad is here right now. Um, but, uh, Dell, uh, and Kaylee, Kevin, and Cameron have all been, uh, Members of the Month the last two months. And I just put on there the things that they, uh, love about the Boys and Girls Club. So Dell said he loves being able to be with his friends. Uh, Kaylee, uh, she loves all the projects we do and all the staff members here at club. Uh, Kevin's only answer was, he loves the staff here. I mean, and, but Kevin has been a kid that's been with us from fourth grade and that kid has gone through, I, I am so proud of that young man. From fourth grade to eighth grade now, he is, he is a totally different person. You know, and then, uh, Cameron this year, which, uh, some of you guys obviously know, uh,
He was pretty excited when he brought the chocolate milk home.
He loves the crafts that we get to do and, you know, these are the kids that really represent and set the bar for everybody at club. And, you know, throughout the year, I can't wait to see the rest of them that we get. And then at that Youth and Teen of the Year Event that we do, um, all of our staff get a chance to speak about all these wonderful club members. So, you know, if, if you guys get the chance and you're free, you're all welcome Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. Um, and then, uh, did it skip some?
Did I?
Uh, did it erase one? Uh, that's alright. I, there was one more slide that, I was gonna have two people come in here today. Uh, um, Ally and, uh, McKenna, I thought I had slides from on there. I may have deleted it showing you before, but, um, they have been staff and club kids for the Boys and Girls Club, and I wanted them to speak a little bit about what the club has done for them, not only as, uh, club kids, but as staff, so. Um, I didn't get to look at this that much. They gave it to me tonight. It was kind of the last minute, but, um, we asked them a couple of questions and they were gonna, I said, it doesn't have to be long, just talk for like thirty seconds each. But, um, their answers for, uh, what impact did the club have on you growing up? Um, um, McKenna said, the club was a safe place for me where I felt I could, I could be comfortable being me. Uh, the club taught me it's okay to be you and be proud of my differences. Um, Ally said, uh, to that answer, she said, growing up at the club helped me out, uh, by getting me out of my shell. Uh, it helped me realize that, uh, talking to adults is not a scary thing. Um, I thought I was gonna, but, uh, was there a youth development professional that positively impacted you growing up? Uh, McKenna said, uh, yes, her name was Jamie. Uh, she no longer works for the club, but she taught me to embrace what I am and not be scared of trying new things. Oh, oh, I didn't read this one yet. Uh, uh, Ally put, during my time at the club, uh, Joe made the biggest impact on me. Uh, he always knew what I needed to hear, even when I didn't wanna hear it. Um, sorry. Uh, number five, uh, was a question. I'm not reading them all, I just wanted to go a little bit over it. Uh, why did you choose to become a youth development professional? Uh, I wanted to create a place where the younger generation would get great memories and friends like I did at club. And then, uh, Ally put, I chose to be a youth development professional because I wanted to be able to make an impact on kids' lives, just like the people that worked at the club when I went there did for me. So, wow, sorry. These are the things that, I mean, oh, jeez, that make me love what I do. Um, and what our team does. Um,
Well, we appreciate it, Joe. Very much. So, I mean, just think of this now through that lens. Nacusa School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good characters, character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community. And, I mean, you nailed it. You nailed that.
Yeah, this is something that our, our community and district desperately needs. Um, the stimulation definitely from COVID, the interactions, the support, role models, so. Um, I think we can all hear the, the passion when you're going through the presentation, so, um, thank you for the work that you do.
And that's me. Supposedly, she made that, and she said. So that's how I put that one on there. I just thought it was funny. They made, they made models. They did, they did models of certain rooms together in groups and, uh, like of the Boys and Girls Club and stuff, and she was so proud of it.
I would have not figured that out.
It was funny. So.
Well, thank you, Joe. We appreciate it.
Does that mean any questions or anything? Or, I know that, I don't know much time you guys have, and I didn't wanna go too crazy with time.
Yeah, any questions?
Not really a question. I just know, just knowing you and working with you a little bit, and you've coached my kids in sports and stuff too. So just even outside the Boys and Girls Club, I know your passion for the kids and you and I have had a couple of side discussions and I really appreciate the work that you're doing on all levels.
That's what it's all about, those, those good comments from kids.
Alright, well, with that, thank you, Joe. We are gonna move forward. We have Eric, Eric Saylor in tonight to give us a technology update.
Thanks for having me back. Uh, I think the last time I was here, uh, we were discussing the possible approval for the one-to-one initiative for the Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna again, give you guys an update on where we are on that, um, how things are going, what we're learning, um, just quickly. So, I wanna say that we implemented, everything was approved, everything was put in, and we were learning as we went. Um, so there's been some hiccups. There's been some pivoting of some, uh, some things. Um, I won't say that a hundred percent of it's been great. I won't say a hundred percent's been poor. But I mean, we're, we're working at it and, and every day, every month, we're trying to figure out better ways to do certain things. Um, when I sit in my office, I don't have a lot of people to, uh, bounce ideas off of. Excuse me? So, yeah, that, that sounds good, so. So, the, I think we have about thousand Chromebooks out. Uh, we implemented those, I lost, I don't remember if it was before the holidays last year or shortly after, maybe it was after the semester. This year, it took about, I'd say, three weeks to get everything up and running. Um, a lot of that because we had some CISA staff changes, um, and I had him working on a lot of different things. Uh, but we got through it. Um, I'm sure if we would canvass the staff and the students, they could, we, they could tell me what's working, what's not working. Long story short, um, we have second and seventh grade got new devices this year, and eventually those devices will have a life cycle, they'll, they'll work their way up. Um, the HP devices that we had currently bought in years past, those are now spares in the H, in, uh, libraries. Um, so we're able to do, we, we have more as far as extras, if, if we have to send something in for repair or if there's another issue. Uh, repairs, all of them I send in, except for screens. I fix them myself. They all go down in Milwaukee. I get a big Pelican case. I get about ten of them, if there's issues, they go down there, they get fixed, they come back. Um, one thing I'm seeing is the turnaround time on that is, that's a couple of weeks. Especially if you have one student that either, something happens to that device right away when I got the Pelican case back, cause we gotta wait to fill it. Or if it's the, that student that as soon as it went out, then I get one right away. That's seems to what happens.
Of course.
Overall, I think it, I think it's, it's, it's getting better, and, and we will continue to get better with that. Um, I'm, I'm trying to be as transparent as I can be with, uh, notices, with communication. Um, and I think we'll, we'll do, I will do a little better, um, with families and stuff and have some, some information posted on the, on the web in the future. Um, over the summer, we had a huge project where we got rid of all the smartboards. So if you've ever worked on a smartboard, they're, they're gone. Um, we had a twenty-yard dumpster full. Got rid of them, took all the projectors down. Um, if you've ever worked in that situation, projectors, bulbs constantly go. We had a hundred different makes and models. I had to buy five at a time of this and, and it was just a logistics nightmare. Um, we went with the clever touches for a touchscreen option, um, which the more that I learn every, every time that I have to look something up, they're just amazing, um, the, what you can and can't do with them. And I'm gonna be sending out probably for the next couple of days. There was some training down in CISA. I got the videos for that. I'm gonna give that to the staff, so they can uh, watch them and, and figure stuff out on their own if need be. The other option that we have are TVs. All of them come with a brand-new cart. Um, the carts are a little big, but they're electric. They go up and down, so it's a one-fit-all. They, all the displays are seventy-five inch. Um, they work well in the elementary setting, because the screen can go almost all the way down to the floor. And then at the, um, high school level, middle school level, they can go up, so people can see them. So that was a huge undertaking. Um, with that, those carts, when I made one of them, it took me about an hour and a half to make just one. And we had a hundred of them that we had to make. Um, and I, it was right before I had a scheduled vacation to go, so called in some, some students, I think, Mark Winger, um, he came. I had some YAs. And I, I promised them a steak dinner if they would get everything done in a week. So, each cart came with five boxes, so we had four twenty cubic yard dumpsters full of cardboard, um, and packing supplies. So if, if, if you saw any of the gyms during the, the summer, it was a huge undertaking. Um, so, those are all implemented. Um, we're working on some issues and bugs and stuff like that with casting and, and some wireless solutions. Um, with that though, I'd like to thank the, the maintenance staff, phenomenal. Steve getting the recycling and the, and the stuff, taking care of the, all of the custodians. Um, when I do a project, I don't expect the custodians to clean up my messes. I always clean up my own messes. Um, so I appreciate all of them kinda helping me get that stuff out. Um, the, with the Chromebooks, the, the putting that stuff out, Sarah Lawton and Elena Black at the elementary school have been phenomenal. They've taken that. Everything is run out of that, um, that library itself, so I don't have to oversee it. I don't have to micromanage it. I don't, I don't have that. We're getting that way in some of the other locations. We're just trying to, it's, it's to help speed things up. You know, if, if a student breaks something in the library, they can get it, they can move on. If a new student comes or a student leaves, that, those processes. Um, so I'd like to thank those, everybody in the libraries that, that have helped me and, and the YAs and Lynn and, and all you guys. Um, I'm also working on trying to get a better solution for these two TVs. Obviously, you guys see the, the janky HDMI cord. It's working, but I'm looking at some kinda wireless solution. The old HDMI casting, it's, it's old. So I'm looking at trying to, I'm, I'm canvassing some other school districts, see what they do, and then we, you guys will have a, a better solution here also. Um, the, two last things. So another big thing is I'm working with some, some vendors. Uh, we're updating some locks and some cameras and some, um, paging issues that were identified last year. Um, I'm working through those lists. I, I got some feelers out for some boats and stuff, so we're gonna be adding some of that stuff for, for safety. Um, just to patch some of the holes maybe that, um, through the years have, have arisen. Especially like the outdoor cameras, the cameras that we have now. If you see this camera that's sitting on the outside of the parking lot right here, it's a four-way camera on one pedestal. Um, high-def, great. So all the buildings, we're replacing those. Um, and we'll be replacing and getting better definition cameras if need be. Also adding some locks. Um, also the, uh, each main entrance to the buildings, we're gonna tie that into our camera system and the form and cast system that we have. So when somebody presses the button, it'll come up to be able to answer it from their phone, not, not how it's set up now in that little white box. So, we're working on some of that stuff. And then lastly, I just hired somebody. Uh, pending background investigation and all that, but he is a, to help me. So, the IT department will become a department with two now. So, I'm hopefully, hopefully, we will be able to utilize that person for Chromebook stuff. I'll be able to divvy up my stuff, which will free my time up on some of the break-fix stuff to do some of the other project planning, some of the other grant writing and stuff like that. I don't know if I can say his name.
Sure, yeah, we haven't put it on the agenda yet because we're, we're waiting for the background check.
And it's all opinion, you guys, but.
Right, but he is a Nacusa alum, so that is really exciting.
It's Logan O'Donnell.
Yeah.
That you guys know. Graduated fifteen. And one of the best answers he said during interviews is, he's, he wants to be here and learn from us to eventually take my position at some point, so. He's got fifteen years to do it, he can have it. Other than that, working on plenty of other things, I just wanted to highlight some of the, the major things that we're working on. So, if you guys have any questions, or if you want specific updates, you can let me know, or email me or whatever.
So, are you gonna bounce the ideas off of Logan now instead of you?
Yeah.
Just making sure, because that way, you know, it just helps, you know?
You might think I'm pokey because I talk to myself, especially when I'm writing emails and stuff, I read it a hundred times. It's gonna be a learning experience because I think I've been here twelve years in a room by myself, so. It's kinda like being in, in prison, you know, you're locked.
You get a roomie now.
Oh, yeah, I got a, I got a bunkmate, so. Anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. I, I mean, we appreciate the work you're doing. Like, we all know technology isn't always smooth, so we expect hiccups down the road anyway. So, if there's something more you need from us, that we can kinda help ease the process, you know, just reach out and go from there. So, but no, we, we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to it. I know the big updates for the TVs have been going wrong too, so.
Well, we appreciate you guys supporting the technology department and authorizing and hiring them another person. Because Eric, it was spent so much time on the fixing and the reactive mode, where now he will be more proactive and we can start planning, you know, looking at those projects, and hopefully avoiding the reactive state, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
We are gonna move over to our student representative, Alexa.
All right, so, we had our blood drive here last week, and we collected forty-one units of blood, and each unit can actually save up to three lives. And as a school, with all the blood drives we've done, we've collected two-hundred-and-ninety-eight units. So, we're just shy of saving up to one-thousand lives. And our next blood drive is gonna be on March first. FBLA had a leadership conference on Monday, and it went well as far as I know. National Honor Society is doing the Breakfast with Santa event at the Nacusa Court on December fourth, I believe. Link crew, so we meet with the kids every week. And the second quarter beginning, we talk to them about how to study and take notes because they're realizing that they have to pass their classes, and.
Those are the freshmen.
Yeah, the freshmen. And they don't all know how to study or take notes properly, especially with some of the harder classes. So, we talked to them about that last week. We're having Veterans Day Assembly on Friday. And then for Student Council, we're working on the Winter Spirit Week, which will be coming up before Christmas. And then back from homecoming, we had a penny war, and we actually raised four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars for the Southwood County Humane Society. So, the track will be going out to them shortly. And then for sports, girls' basketball started on Monday, and they should have two teams this year, so numbers have increased. And then boys' basketball and wrestling start next week, Monday.
It's good to see the, the, the blood drive numbers too, that's awesome, so. Any questions for Alexa? All right, well, thank you for that. And then I did skip over accidentally on our compensation committee update, so we will head on over to that, I think.
This'll be pretty quick because you guys have heard this several times now over, over the past several years. And if you just wanna go to the next slide there. We did a survey again at the beginning of October, asking about any concerns, satisfaction with the, with the compensation plan. And eighty-five percent of them are satisfied with the, the compensation plan. And I think we had over sixty people, sixty teaching staff members take it this time, whereas last year it was only about forty or so, it wasn't quite as many. There is a higher interest in the National Board certica, certification. There's currently ten people pursuing the National Board certification. And moving forward, the biggest concern that we saw in the survey was that the professional development, the clarification of it, how to, how to attain it, if they're not doing masters or National Board certification, those are very clear paths. But with the amount of professional development that we have currently already in place with the district, it's, where, where do we go otherwise for ourselves to further get those PD units?
So, we'll be working with Terry in regards to clarifying the professional development units, possibly inviting the principals as well to our next committee meeting. I, we just heard it loud and clear that PD needs some clarification. So, we wanna make sure that we're following the, you know, Terry's directive and the principal's plans in order to streamline the PDs, so we'll look over that.
And I know everybody hates surveys, but do we know why? I mean, I mean, we have an uptake from forty to sixty this year, but do we know why?
Because we're overwhelmed, and it was one more survey. So, it, you know, and, and we, we gave a window too. And if they missed the window, they missed the window. So, and that happens, you open it up, and you intend to go back to it, but something else happens, and then you forget it was there. It happens.
Any questions?
I'm just glad that the high number is there of people that are satisfied.
Yes.
And our revolving door seems to have pretty much stopped. Um, the fifteen percent that, okay, we're, you know, I mean, we're necessarily negative toward it, but we're just, did that have to do with the CB, you know?
The PD?
The, the, yeah, the personal development.
Um, a lot of it, I think, had to do with just unsure of the professional development or feeling that we already have a lot on our plates, is how am I going to get more units? I'm already taking time away from my family with everything that, else that is going on in the current professional development and initiatives of the district.
So, that was a, to them, that was part of the negative?
That was part of the negative, yes.
They sounded tired.
Tired, yeah.
It's good to see so many people wanting to be nationally certified, it's awesome.
It, it's quite the undertaking, I'm, I'm one of those ten, and I am, and I am enjoying the process so far, so.
This is your first year now, right, or second?
This is my first. I just started over the summer.
So, how many do we have now in the second year?
Five.
Okay, so five of five, good.
Yes, and technically, one in the third year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cool.
Well, we wish you luck in your studies.
Well, it, really what it is, is it's a lot of evidence proving what we do in the classroom. There's four different components, one focuses on differentiation of kids, one focuses on data and assessment, one focuses on professional learning communities, and one focuses on, well, there's one that's like really big and has a lot of pieces to it. But, one that you have to videotape your teaching styles and routines and structure in the class, and then you have a content knowledge test too.
Overwhelmed. All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Heidi.
Yeah. And then we did get a packet to look over, for athletic programs. And if there's questions, we can talk about it in our next board workshop. That will be, oops, another packet here, that'll be in December, I believe, December seventh is the next board workshop. So, if you guys wanna take the time between now and then to look over the board athletic programs update, that'd be great. Come with questions for our workshop to discuss that, so. I'm not missing nothing else with communicating with the board, so we will go into policy governance. Terry, if you wanna read OE six, financial plan?
I'd be happy to. So, annually, the board will review the multi-year financial plan that is related directly to the board's results, priorities, and operational expectations goals, and that avoids long-term fiscal jeopardy to the district. So, what's been outlined here is some topics. And that first one really developed a summary format understandable to the board and presented in a manner that allows the board to understand the relationship between the budget and the results priorities. So, we've been working hard as a district to really have everything lead back to those results policies. So, this is a visual. So, in taking a look at, the ultimate results are connected to the strategic plan, and certainly our strategic plan is what's driving our current work. But if you look at the financial decisions, there's been no new teaching positions in this last year. And we are working on one open technical education teaching position. And then there's upgrades to the equipment in the tech ed lab, and certainly we're, we're really going slow with that so that we can bring on the new equipment, it really makes sense of it, and certainly we need to schedule some time up there this year for that. But, we've spent about half of the five-hundred thousand to upgrade the tech ed labs, so we're about halfway through. Recruit and retain outstanding district staff, we continue to work on that. And that compensation model that the board's approved certainly has helped. And, you know, us doing everything we can to help our teachers feel comfortable and, and supporting them in their work with kids. So, that's part of the, the, the work that I think all of us have been working on to really align how we're spending our money to those results policies.
Yeah, and definitely I think that the tech ed, you know, shouldn't be come to a surprise to us. Apparently, two of them last year, we talked about the position here and there too, so.
So, and, and this is really fitting, and Lynn, I don't know if you wanna talk about any of the topics there, two through seven. But certainly, we've gone over a lot of this in the, in the last month related to our annual meeting. And it's very fitting that this comes now. So, Lynn, did you have anything that you wanted to share?
Well, the only thing I wanted to mention is that we as a, or you as a board, will need to talk about the next planning for the referendum. We are in year three of a five-year referendum planning. And typically, we need to have that rolled out in the last year of the referendum so we can all be on the same page in our communication and making sure that the community is well aware that we will be coming to them again for a vote. I have started that conversation in the newsletter, I actually wrote a letter, or wrote an article in the last newsletter talking about keeping our promises. And I laid out the promises that we made and how we kept them. So, I think we're in a good position, I just don't wanna lose any momentum.
And just to clarify, operational is what we're considering?
We are, but we can always talk about others as well.
I know with the election and the number of school districts that were up for a referendum that did not pass again. Now, there were a lot of them that didn't pass.
Sixty-nine percent passed.
Oh, really?
Yes.
But locally, you know, like Stratford, and Merrill, and Adams. There were a number that, or in the area that did not pass, so.
So, most important that we keep our promises, continue to get the word out about how well we're doing with using their dollars.
Absolutely. So.
Thank you, Lynn.
Unless there's, yes, thank you, Lynn. Moving forward, I'm keeping promises, and I'm just gonna look for a motion then for OE six, unless there's any discussion.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you. A few more to go over, we have OE seven, financial administration.
Yeah, so annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has not caused or allowed any financial activity or condition that materially deviates from the budget adopted by the board, caused or allowed any fiscal condition that is inconsistent with achieving the board's results or meeting any operational expectation goals, or place the long-term financial health of the district in jeopardy. So, what you have outlined here is, you know, statements that get around that promise to you from administration.
I haven't seen any red flags, I know if there were, we'd be discussing it way before this would come here, so. Unless there's discussions, I'll just look for a motion for OE seven.
Go move.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you.
Lynn, and thank you for the thorough report.
Oh, sure.
And OE eight, asset protection.
Sure, the district administrator will assure that all district assets are adequately protected, properly maintained, appropriately, appropriately used, and not placed at undue risk.
So, there's a couple of attachments that were embedded in the policy. And that's basically talking about our property liability umbrella insurances. My, I guess my request, or I just want you to know that if you ever want our insurance agent, EMC, to come in and just give you a presentation on the various policies that you hold, we certainly can plan that at some point in the future. We did have an increase in our workers' comp insurance, but I believe I was talking about that last year, that I was warning you that we were gonna have a pretty big increase. Well, we increased pretty big. So, right now, we have a mod rate of, I think, one-point-zero-four, which is not good. Anytime you're above one, you're, you're paying more than the industry average. We had a pretty big claim that came in, and that's gonna be on our books now for three years. So, we knew it, we were planning for it, and so we were, we were okay with it. So, oh, it's one-point-one-one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot, okay. Yeah, so it's just a summary of our policies. I am always on the lookout, especially with cyber insurance, because of all the ransomware that is out there. I wanna make sure that if we ever are hit with a ransomware attack, I wanna make sure that we have a policy that covers most of that. Because that could get into the millions of dollars easily. So, I have, I have actually upped our insurance on our cyber insurance. We also have, it's called, what's that last one, Terry, the?
Data compromise.
Oh, the next, the other one above it.
Errors, errors and omission.
Oh, okay, so there were, I know there was one that.
Umbrella?
Nope.
General liability?
Data compromise.
Oh, equipment floater, electronic dab, no, that wouldn't be it.
Yeah, I think it was the equip, the data, the data, electronic data processing, that is the one that I added. That, that kinda marries with the equipment floater, so. I'm always, you know, I meet with our insurance agent on an, on an annual basis, and we go over each one of these policies to make sure that we're, we're adequately covered. I just don't ever wanna get in a position where something happens and we're not covered, so.
And it's happening, it's happening out there, that.
Not here, there.
In other districts, and they're, it's messy.
I'm all about being proactive, so thank you, Lynn.
Yep.
Following that, OE eight, looking for a motion?
Also move.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. And we are on our last one here, GP seven, agenda planning.
Yeah, to accomplish its stated goals, the board will adopt and follow an annual calendar of agenda items, which includes monitoring, reviewing, and refining of policies, linkages, and board performance in addition to evaluation of the district administrator. So, that board of, the board of education monitoring calendar, we just keep editing that and reviewing it as you guys come up with new ways and new ideas and new agenda items. So, Diana does a really good job of keeping track of our agendas and our calendar.
We like the work that you do.
I like the work that she does, she helps me out a lot, a lot of things.
There you go, Diana.
So, no complaints about Diana looking for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Oh, I have a good point.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you. All right, we are, we're sailing through this consent agenda. I'll read the employment here. Justice Kuhn, Special Education Program Assistant at Humke and AMS, congratulations. We have Todd Bujrow, our varsity assistant baseball coach, and Hayden Cabeli, head JV baseball coach. Congratulations to those new coaches and hires. Congratulations to those new coaches and hires. And then Darren, a couple donations for us.
Yes, we received some puzzles, games, and toys, uh, to the district from ANLIPAC, which I very much appreciate. And again, the backpack for kids, uh, we're lucky to get donations every month on these. Twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents from Roll Makers, uh, and seventy-five dollars from the Sacred Heart Collections, and eighty dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Women's Admission, so women admissions. Thank you very much for all that, uh, those donations, so, very much appreciated.
Um, and then minutes? Uh, ten nineteen was our regular board meeting. Um, at this time, I'm gonna look for your motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, thank you. Um, so our future agenda items, we're gonna have our board workshop on the seventh of December. Um, speaking of Diana, if she could toss on the athletic improvement updates on there just to kinda discuss when you find time this week. And then December fourteenth would be our regular board meeting. Um, we'll discuss the school calendar and emergency action drills and potential for a therapy dog. Alright, um, unless there, um, so I'm gonna go into, actually, we have closed session, but I think I need to, I guess we're gonna adjourn into a closed session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so looking for a motion to end the board meeting, and then we'll let everyone leave, and then we'll go into a closed session.
So moved.
First.
Second.
Second, um, all in favor, please say aye.
No.
We'll call.
We'll call.
Alright.
Cody Gubelski.
Yes.
Dave Schmidt.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes.
Mark Walker.
Yes.
I go, yes, that would be.
Alright, thank you, everyone, we'll have a short bathroom break, and.